Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of Malodian Morse Craydium, Ante Calorani. The acronym is NPAC and the Chief Judge of Counsel of Court. Today is Class 53, Class 53. What did we learn in Class 52? Well, we started learning a little bit more about this thing that everybody calls the straw man. We started learning a little bit more about why Moors are over-complicating the due process of law as it relates to what they call the straw man. What we're learning is the straw man is a connotative linguistic. Reality is the denotative linguistic is Moroccan subject. And we have been trying to put it into a status of Moroccan subject that if so juror, Moors subject, we would have nearly understood to go back and study our treaties in order to understand how do you free the if so juror, Moors subject, not the straw man. The word straw man is nowhere in our treaties. But if so juror, Moors subject is something that the colonists named us. But more specifically, in our treaties, we're known as what? Moroccan subjects. So we have been studying our own Moors treaties and understood the proper name for our status was Moroccan subject. If they branded us in 1906 on the expatriation citizenship abroad, Mr. Ruth, page 459 and 460 of that document, you would understand that they had already branded the Moors as if so juror, Moors subjects, if in fact, Moors did not know their nationality. And if you didn't know your nationality, that made you immediately what? Stateless. That immediately made you what? ET. That immediately made you what? Homeless, right? So we have been just simply studying our own Moors treaties. We're already known by now how to solve the problem, solve the problem of what? Due process of law. Due process of law is about what? Treaties, because treaties are pre-law of the land. So in studying the treaty in Madrid in 1880, Article 15, keep in mind the United States and the Sultan of Morocco in 1958 tried to omit Article 15 through a conspiracy to try to omit a provision from a multilateral treaty. And guess what? They couldn't do it. See, in a multilateral treaty or any bilateral treaty, all the parties have to agree to remove a provision, just like any contract. If 10 people sign a contract, two people out of that contract can't agree to strike a provision. All 10 people have to agree to strike a provision. So everything the United States of America did and the United States along with the Sultan in 1958 became what? Boy Avanicio. Boy from the beginning. However, how should Moors approach this? Evidently, the United States thought that Article 15 was kryptonite to them. So what do we do? We double down on anything they think undermines their regime with capitulations. Because that's exactly what was happening. They knew Article 15 and the treaty in Madrid, paragraph 1 and 2 gave them some provisions in a treaty that allowed them to hold on to the limited civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors. Moors connotative was in a status of slavery. It wasn't slavery. We were just subjects. What does subject mean? Subjected to the jurisdiction of a conquering foreigner called American. More specifically, the United States of America. So what we learned in Class 52 was Moors overthinking the process. Process of what? Process of law. What was the law the whole time? Was the supreme law. Your Moors treaties. And that's the reason why we underscore the Moors treaty. So today, we'll keep talking about our treaties. Today, we'll start reading the Act of Algeciras of 1906. Obviously, Moors out there know that over decades, Moors hadn't been talking about the Act of Algeciras of 1906. So today, we'll talk about it today. We'll start talking about it because it talks about the Moors rights. It also shows you how powerful the Moors are from a Moors government perspective. Not just a standalone word of Moors. Not a standalone word of Moors, but Moors government. What's a Moors government? A state. Because you can't have a government without a state and you can't have a state without a constitution. That's called what? Having full powers of having what? The paramount constitution because the emanating document based upon your sovereignty is your state. So Moors have to understand when it comes to this word sovereignty. What does sovereignty mean? What gives you your sovereignty? It's not just your consanguinity. It's the state. The state is sovereign. The state extends sovereignty to its nationals and its citizens. You're not sovereign as a standalone individual. The state is sovereign. And the state through its constitution extends through an application called your open allegiance to said state. It extends the sovereignty to you. So Moors have to understand, you're not sovereign. Your state is sovereign. And since you're stateless, what does that mean by default? That means that now you come under the sovereignty of the conquering state called the United States of America and its several corporate states. So when they all refer to Moors as being sovereign citizens, what are they trying to tell you? That you're under the sovereignty of the conquering states. All the 50 several states of the Union. And you're still a citizen of the United States because you're still a Moroccan subject. Who's the Moroccan subject? Kendrick Johnson. What makes Kendrick Johnson a Moroccan subject? Because Kendrick Johnson is on the registrar of the United States of America and the United States International Organization, that corporation. You as a human being are not on the registrar. Your name is on the list as being the citizen, as being the naturalized person. So therefore, when you change your name, you change your name by doing what? Pleading allegiance to a different state. Now you come under sovereignty of a different state. You want to be Italian? No worries, go to Italy. Go ahead and fly an application. That way, you get what? Italian what? Sovereignty. Because in Italy, as a state, is sovereign. Italy extends the sovereignty to its citizens. That way, the citizens consider themselves as being what? Italian. So Moors have to do the same thing. You just can't arbitrarily say you're a Moor. What says you're a Moor? Yeah, it's your consanguinity, but the application is what? The sovereignty of the state. And the state extends you that sovereignty. Opportunity to be a national of the state through an application, which is the proper mechanism that deals with the arrangements of the state, right? Alright, so we'll learn a little bit more today about Moors, Moors governments, Moroccan subjects, and proteges. Today is a class where now all these terms, these words are going to come full circle now today as we read all the Act of Algeciras of 1906. Now you see why I put so many emphasis on it because every read the Act of Algeciras of 1906 is going to mention parties, right? So before we get into the class, obviously, we always open up about the Constitution, right? Everything's about constitutional principles. This is NPAC's paramount constitution. As Moors come into statehood in each of the territories such as Texas, you'll also have your own constitution, right? That sets forth what? The sovereignty for your Moors nationals. So you want to talk sovereignty? Then you have to talk statehood, alright? today, we're going to get into what's called the Act of Algeciras of 1906. What is the Act of Algeciras of 1906? It is a Moors treaty that represents the empire of Morocco. And it sets forth provisions, rules, regulations, protocols on how Moors governments deal with foreigners that are in Morocco, not at Morocco. In Morocco. The United States of America is in Morocco, not at Morocco. The United States is in Morocco, not at Morocco. So the Act of Algeciras is about foreigners in Morocco. Why do I say in Morocco? Because that's what's in your treaties. That's what the ICJ said when they labeled Plan 1st United States of America. How did they label it? Okay, let's take a look at it. Case concerning rights of nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. It's never been at Morocco. Some Moors out there, they like to say at Morocco, it's not at Morocco. It's in Morocco. That's what the ICJ said. That's what your treaty said, alright? So it's in Morocco. So what are we going to go over today, okay? Let's get the basic concepts together, alright? First, the Act of Algeciras of 1906 is about what? It's about the triple principle of statehood, right? And what is the triple principle? Sovereignty and independence, integrity of domains, and economic liberty without any inequality. That's the triple principle. We're going to go over that today, alright? It's also going to list in the treaty who are the parties. We start talking about parties. Why? Because treaties are contracts. The parties must be known. So who are the parties? Okay, well, we're going to learn this about the Sultan. But since there's no more Sultans since 1956, now everything's about what? States. Moors states. So it's the Sultan, i.e. the Moors states. That's what we're going to learn about today. It's also about what? Moors governments in Morocco, we're going to learn about that. It's about what else? Moors subjects in Morocco, we'll learn about that. It's also about proteges in Morocco, we'll learn about that. And lastly, it's about who? Who are the other parties to the contract? So multilateral contract. Multilateral. So who's the other opposing person in the contract? Foreigners. Who are the foreigners? For example, Americans in Morocco. We'll learn about that today, alright? Okay, so as we open up, as we've talked about in previous classes, remember now, we're building up to this point right now. A lot of NPAC study session class has been about building up so you'll understand the basics about this conversation we're having today. So first things first, the United States wrote this right here on this document. This is their document, right? They wrote on here what they did in terms of following the instructions. They made it a public document to let you know what? Did they, they signed the Act of Algeciras of 1906 in April 7, 1906? Who signed it April 7, 1906? The United States of America as the what? As the single state on an international level. So let's see this word right here. International conference. So on an international level, the United States of America acts as the single state on the record, one state, right? One state that represents what you call the interdependent other 50 states, okay? So they represent the other 50 interdependent states. So the United States of America signs it in 1906. Then they turn around and ratified it through their legislative branch. So they ratified it, advised by the Senate, December 12, 1906. So the legislative branch got together of who? The United States. Not the United States of America. The United States. Because the United States is now acting as if it is governing affairs of the citizens of the United States of America. So the United States as an international organization, a corporation, is now handling all the municipal affairs of the United States of America. So we're talking about two separate entities, right? I'm speaking very slowly. So the United States of America signed in April 7, 1906. Then the United States as a second entity ratified and advised by their Senate, December 12, 1906. And then after the legislative branch signs it, then it was sent over to the President, right? So that bill, the bill went up to the President. So ratified by the President of the United States, December 14, 1906, right? So they fully disclosed the United States did it. But you see what they did? They're real smooth. They don't want their citizens to realize there's two separate entities going on. So they put right here, signed it, Algeciras by the United States of America, April 7, 1906. See, they conveniently did not put the United States of America in this first sentence. But they conveniently put it here. Ratified by the President of the United States. But why did they say the President of the United States ratified it? Because I've shown you in previous videos that the Presidents of Presidents take their oath to who? The Constitution of the United States. Not the Constitution of the United States of America. You see? So after that, then they ratified and deposited. So first, they did what? Ratification, ratification, then deposit. That's what we learned about the Act of Algeciras, right? Articles 20, 120 to 123. So they're following instructions. First, they ratified, then they deposited with the Spanish government, December 31, 1906, okay? Then they turn around and did what? See, it's right here. Proclaim January 22, 1907. You know what that is? That's called promulgation. 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 What does promulgation mean? They're getting notification to all the other states that were part of this multilateral treaty. So all your contracting states receive notice that they're now a party, a party to this treaty. So what do they do? They ratified, deposited, promulgated. Just that easy. What are they following? Moors rules. They're following Moors protocol. They're following Moors culture. They're following what? The customary laws of Moors treaties. It's right there in your face, right? Okay, let's continue. Now, you see right here, this was a proclamation by Theodore Roosevelt. We're not going to read it at this time. Once we, once we're finished with the Act of Algeciras, we'll go back and read, okay? We've read it before in previous classes. We'll go back and read it once we're done reading over the Act of Algeciras, okay? Because he says a lot of important things you need to be aware of, okay? We'll go back over it as a refreshment, okay? But as you scroll down, you see this word right here? Translation. Let me push it down in case our students at home can see it. Right here, translation. I'll make it larger. Translation. Why is that important to understand? Why am I pointing that out? Why am I underscoring that? Okay, here's why. As you notice, at least this particular copy has both French and English. French and English. The original was written in what? Arabic. Why? Because the Sultan, which is the sovereign over the empire, so the first language it was written in was Arabic. Then it was written in English and French. What's another reason why I'm putting this, this translation out? Listen to me, Moors, especially young Moors. Moors right now are writing written after digits. They're using all red letters, all small case. We're inventing, or should I say, trying to restore English the way it was written 200, 300 years ago. All we're doing is muddying the waters and complicating our forward mobility. What do I mean? We have to keep it simple, Moors. We have to start following the instructions. Everything now according to international law has set rules of how you engage with other states. So as Moors start to write their competent documents, and your document is an international law document, what do you have to do? International law, the customs of international law only accepts two versions of language now. What are those two versions of language? French and English. That's it. Let's show you a reference point. This right here is the Statue of the International Court of Justice. So you've got the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. And then the Statues of the International Court of Justice, the ICJ, came out in 1946. They have what they call their statutes, okay? So Moors got to go back and look at the statutes. You're going to go down to Article 39, okay? Article 39 of the Statue of the ICJ. Okay. What does chapter 3 say? This is a reference point. This is international law. The customs of international law. These are the rules that Moors have to follow. Listen, chapter 3 of the Statue of the ICJ. Chapter 3, procedure. So it's a procedure. What's procedure mean? Rule, protocol. Article 39, number 1. The official language of the court shall be French and English. If the parties agree... We continue reading. I got the main point out there. Let's continue reading it though. Article 39. Let's continue reading it. If the parties agree, the case shall be conducted in French. The judgment shall be delivered in French. If the parties agree that the case shall be conducted in English, the judgment shall be delivered in English. That's Article 39, right? So let's go back, Act of Algeciras. This is why it's written in French and English. It's protocols. Procedure. Rules of engagement on how you do what? You communicate with other states. You can either, either write in French or you can write in English. That's it. But why else am I underscoring this? You see how they write? This is what you call in English, standardized English. Standardized English. Capital N, in. Not all lowercase letters. Not written all red. Not trying to go back to some language that's 1,000 years old. You have to keep it simple, Moors. If Moors want to get into statehood, guess what we got to do? We got to play by the procedure. We have to play by the rules. These are the customs of international law. You must write and now communicate with everyone on planet Earth in either French or English. And when you write English, you're writing in black and white. Black and white. You're writing what they call standardized English. That's it. It's that simple. Let me tell the Moors something else. As we start to establish states, let's say you establish a state in Arizona corporation. You now did what? You perform a succession, a succession of now taking over that territory through utipasidetis juris. And now you're enforcing what's called erga honest principles. You've taken over the state borders. Now it's a Moors state. But that Moors state that's now in the former territory of Arizona, they read all their documents in red letters, lowercase, and in some language you can't hardly understand. These are two Moors states trying to correspond with each other. So what's going to happen? NPAC is an example going to say, okay, that Moors state in the former territory of Arizona, you send us this document, but we don't, we can't comprehend what you're saying. Please translate it into traditional English. So what's going to happen? Moors in their states, they're going to have two sets of books. Because we're trying to now use a language or text of something 1,000 years old when everybody on planet Earth has agreed to standardize English or standardize French. Moors have to keep the due process of law simple. Simple, Moors. So if Moors states like NPAC gets into treaty relations with another Moors state, we're going to ask you, when you send your documents to us, can you, can you translate? Can you put it in simple standardized English? So what does that tell you? You might as well just do it the first time, the way the procedure says. Keep it simple, Moors. You got to remember something. We are conquered people. We have been conquered at the very least since the 1800s, the very least. So we don't need to over-complicate how we start to correspond with each other in our states. Because I guarantee you this. Send those documents to any other international state. You know, they're going to tell you, can you translate this into French or English? Because you send them something that they can't understand, you know what they're going to say? You're incompetent. You don't know how to follow instructions. I'm trying to keep it simple, simple for Moors, right? Let's take a look at the ICJ. International Court of Justice. The world court. How do they write it? Okay, in black and white. Sometimes in all caps, especially on the title things. But as soon as you get into the actual writing of the document, right? How do they write it? Standardized English. In black and white. Nothing old language that's 1,000 years old. Keep it simple, Moors. If the world courts write in standardized English or standardized French, so should Moors. Moors are conquered people. We need to keep it simple as we're getting back into statehood. Let's not overthink the due process of law. Let's move on. We're going to start reading what's called the preamble. The preamble is very important. The ICJ talks about the preamble of the Act of Algeciras. This is what I need Moors to understand. I've said this before in previous videos. Do not, when you look at a treaty of declaration, don't go straight to the articles. You have no choice but to read the preamble or sometimes they refer to it as the annex. You have to read that first. It's the instructions, it's letting you know the context and the, and the concept of the author, of why they're writing what they're going to write. We're going to learn here in a moment as we read the preamble. We're going to go back to the Plan 1st United States of America, 1952, and see what the ICJ said about the preamble. The preamble is nothing to be played with. Why do I say that? The preamble is the first page of the contract. It's not a throwaway page. It's the first page of the contract. It's page 1. Alright, so as we read the preamble, as you notice, I'm taking my time today. This is a very important time that Moors need to understand. Well, we're going to start reading now the preamble, but as we start to read preamble, before they get into the actual text of the preamble, they're going to list the parties. All contracts list the parties first. As the Moors take the time, go back and look at this. I want you to write down every party. That way, you'll realize how many European states know exactly who the Moors are. So as you read this, don't just, just whip through it. Take your time, write down each one of the parties. That way, you'll start seeing who these parties are. And I want you to pay attention to the specific party called the United States of America, alright? Okay, mother. Let's go ahead and get started.
In the, in the name of Almighty God, His Majesty, the Emperor of Germany, King of Prussia, in the name of the German Empire...
Pause. So as you read this, mother, as soon as you get done reading, and you see it has a pause, right? Kind of pause there, semicolon, then keep reading, okay? Until you get down to the next semicolon, pause, and then read. The reason why I'm doing that, we're breaking up that way our students at home can see all these different parties, okay? Alright, so let's start from the top.
In the name of Almighty God, His Majesty, the Emperor of Germany, King of Prussia, in the name of the German Empire, His Majesty, the Emperor of Austria, King of Bohemia, et cetera, and apostolic King of Hungary, His Majesty, the King of the Belgians, His Majesty, the King of Spain, the President of the United States of America, the President of the French Republic, His Majesty, the King of the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Ireland and of the British dominions beyond the seas, Emperor of India, et cetera, His Majesty, the King of Italy, His Majesty, the Sultan of Morocco, His Majesty, the Queen of...
Her Majesty.
Oh, Her Majesty, the Queen of the Netherlands, His Majesty, the King of Portugal and of the Algarve, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. His Majesty, the Emperor of all the Russias, His Majesty, the King of Sweden.
Okay, start right there. So that's a lot of parties, right? These are Europeans, hybrid Europeans, and the Sultan of Morocco, alright? So now we're going to read the preamble words, the text of the words, okay? So the contract lists what first? The parties, right? Right? Okay, now let's get into. The preamble itself, okay, inspired.
Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco. And recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be affected. By means of the introduction of reforms, based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty. And independence of his Majesty the Sultan. The integrity of his domains and economic liberty without any inequality have resolved. Upon the invitation of his cherifian majesty. To call together a conference. At Algeciras for the purpose of arriving at an understanding. Upon the said reforms, as well as examining the means. For obtaining the resources necessary for their application. And have appointed as their delegates, plenipotentiary, the following.
Alright, thank you very much, mother. Now it's gonna list. The parties. States and the names of the competent authority that represent them, but we're gonna go back and read. The preamble itself, cause it's two parts to preamble, okay? So let's read this first part of the preamble. So the Sultan. Has summoned. All the European states. To his territory, to talk to them. This is nineteen oh six. Why did he do that? You have to understand, the Europeans have always been fighting each other. And now they're starting to come into Africa and carve up Africa. Right? So the Sultan says, I need the reign in the order, these, these columns are out of control. They out of control. So he says. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, we gotta stop right there. So the first thing that was happening, what? Inspired as an aspiration. By the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, so all the Europeans are attaching. Themselves to the reign of order. I need Moors to think with their Moors brain right now, use your discernment. Don't just read the words, start adding what is really going on here. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order. Peace and prosperity in Morocco. Now you see why the I C J says in Morocco? Because it's in Morocco, not at Morocco, this is a treaty. It's not at Morocco, it's in Morocco, let's start from the top, inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order. Peace and prosperity in Morocco, let's stop right there. Everything is about what? Peace and prosperity. So you read the United Nations chart, it's about peace and security. When you talk about the treaties of peace and friendship, they refer to it as what? Amity and commerce. What does amity mean, tranquility, friendship, and then commerce, right? So it's about. Order. Then peace. Then prosperity, you see those three words? That's your triple principle, what came forth first? You have to reign in the order first, which order, statehood. That's what gets order for Moors, you need independent states in order for you to have what? Order, because the order of your state sets up the peace. We learned that what, under definition nation. And from there, once you have the peace, which means now you're reigning in the order. Of what, integrity of your domain creates the peace, the integrity of domain, how do you maintain integrity of domain? That's your law enforcement and your courts. Your constitution sets forth legislation, you're reigning in the order, and the peace is created by your Moors. States. Law, the organized dual society of the state. And once you check the first box of reigning in the order of statehood. Then you nearly get into now reigning in the order through your courts. Then you can have prosperity. Let's uh, let's, let's look at it from the United States perspective, shall we? What did the United States do? They reigned in the order, how did they do that? They created states. What'd they do next? They went to war. With the Moors. Put them in what a statute they call regime of capitulations, what does regime of capitulation mean, war. What'd they do, they undermined the Moors. Under a steep and hypocrisation. And when after they did that, and they got the Moors after two or three generations to start referring themselves to what? Negro, black, colored. African American and Moors American. And all of a sudden, the United States had what, peace? Cause they accomplished what they needed to accomplish, cause they ran in the order. They gave you your public education. And they end up with, start off a war, then they got peace because all of the inhabitants are now in a status of what? Dorsal. We have blended in with them, we don't know the difference between ourselves and them. So now the United States has peace. Cause they're doing what? Overseeing the civil and criminal jurisdiction of its own juror, Moors subjects. And now because of that, they got prosperity. They run in the whole world. From where? Morocco. This is a multilateral treaty. They wanted what, to reign in order too. They want to do what, they wanted peace as well. And they wanted what, prosperity. But they had to get the Moors to acquiesce and agree to it. And how did we agree? Well, they beat us down mentally, physically, emotionally. And they got other Moors to do it to us. The hybrid Europeans have never won a war without a Moor helping them. I'm taking my time with this. So that's another triple principle, right, greater order, peace, prosperity. Right? Okay, and where did that happen? In Morocco. Let's continue. And recognizing that the attainment thereof can only. Be affected by the means of the introduction of reforms. Based upon the triple principle. So we'll stop right there. So you gotta do what? You have to, you have to recognize, Moors have to do, recognize that we need to do what? We need to recognize, we need to attain, we need attainment of what? Effective what? Means, we need effective means to do what, introduce what, reforms, what's a reform? Forms. What are forms, applications? We need to do what, reform, we need to what, restore. Restore what? Forms. What are the forms? Applications. What's the first application you needed to reform? Constitution, and constitution of what? Paramount. It's the emanating document. That establishes the sovereignty. So your reform, your application. Will be based upon. The triple principle of what? Of sovereignty and independence, what's sovereignty independence? Statehood. Of his majesty, the Sultan, let's pause right there, let's break that down real quick. So the, the, his majesty, the Sultan wanted sovereignty and independence. But there's no more Sultan. So by default, now the Sultan is who, Moors states. Cause everything's about statehood. The Sultan turned king nineteen fifty-six, decided to establish what, a modern organic state. Which means now all the Moors can set up what? Modern organic states. That's called customary law. Because he did. We get to do it. So we need to do what? We need a triple principle, sovereignty, independence of Moors states. What else we need, the integrity of his domain, who's the his, the state? His estate, so we need integrity of domains of the state. Cause the his used to be who, the Sultan, now the Sultan is a state, Moors state. So you need integrity of domains, how do you maintain integrity? That's your law enforcement, that's your constable court. As long as you're exercising constable court through your organized dual society. Then the I C J said, that's the only way to do what? Make your laws binding against the United States, and by that way, and that way only. How to get the United States to abide? You need integrity of domains, which is your courts, and you don't have a court without a state. And you don't have a state without a constitution, and your constitution sets up the three branches of government. Moving on. And the third principle. Economic liberty without any inequality, can't be any inequality of statehood. So as Moors establish their states. Your state is sovereign. Your state is sovereign, right, so sovereignty means state. Moors are not sovereign, your Moors state is sovereign. That's the first box. Of the triple principle. It means what, state. State Moors. Integrity of domains means what? Law. And your law is a generic term for your courts, your law enforcement, i.e. your shahid. Your consul general, et cetera, all your legislation. All your ratification. Et cetera. What is economic liberty without any inequality, what's that? That's your what? That creates. Money, prosperity, right? Prosperity. That's prosperity. Okay, let's continue. Let's take it from the top. So Moors have to do what, Moors have to recognize. The need to attain, the need to attain it thereof can only be affected what? Your freedom can only be affected by means of introduction of reforms, applications. Based upon the triple principles of the sovereignty, independence, statehood, right, of majesty, the states, right? The integrity of domains and economic liberty without any inequality, now watch this. Have resolved. That's in your treaty, what happened? The parties must be known, the parties were read first. Then we read the preamble, so the parties mentioned above. Have already resolved and agreed to the terms and conditions of the triple principle. You don't have to go and reinvent the wheel, you don't have to beg them, can you establish statehood? They already agree, it's been resolved. It's been solidified. So the triple principle has been resolved. Upon the invitation of his cherifian majesty to call together a conference. At Algeciras for the purpose of arriving. At an understanding. Upon the said. Applications. As well as examining the means of obtaining the resources necessary for their application. So your applications are your reforms, cause the forms are your application, it must be applicable. It must be applicable. Let's continue. So the applications in half are pointing as their delegates, plenipotentiary, the following, now they're gonna list to you what they call the competent authority. That was their assignment on behalf of the state. So let's go back over it, this is important, I'm gonna pause right here, we're gonna spend some time right here, just to let you know. This is the, this is the. This is the holy grail. Of international law. Every state on planet Earth abides by this triple principle. Right now, Ukraine is fighting over what? Their sovereignty and independence, right now, Ukraine is trying to do what? Maintain integrity of domain, right now, Ukraine is trying to do what? Trying to maintain their economics without any inequality. That's what's happening right now. Russia's doing what? Breaching all of that. That's what you call war crimes. Crimes against humanity. That's called warring, that's not peace. Now I'm gonna tell the Moors right now, keep your eye on the United Nations General Assembly. And what they call their Permanent Security Council. In case Moors don't know it, right now, the International Criminal Court. Is performing investigation in Ukraine. You know what they doing? Checking boxes. They're using what's called diplomatic relations, they're using what's called politics. Politics, they're checking boxes, see, everybody in the world wants things to happen fast. Diplomacy doesn't happen fast when you do it right. The first thing happened was the General Assembly with the United Nations, the one hundred ninety-three member states. First thing they did when all this started, when Russia went into Ukraine, first thing they did is they came together as an assembly. And they tried to tell Russia simply to knock it off, stop it, they didn't stop. So the General Assembly came back together again, they said, okay, we need to put together a vote. That tells Russia, we want you to stop, so they finally broke out the pen and say. Okay, now it's official on the record, we voted, you should stop. Russia didn't stop. What'd they do next? The I C J picked it up, the I C J, now you can go back and look at Ukraine versus Russia. What happened, Ukraine got a judgment in their favor from the I C J under what, genocide. But Ukraine is gonna bring them back to court again, with a whole list of things, but the first thing they started with was genocide, and they won already in I C J. What happened, did Russia stop, cause in that I C J report. Russia was told to remove their troops from Ukraine, did they do it? No. Why, because they're belligerent, they're breaking the rules. What happened next? After I C J had that judgment, it was sent right back to the Permanent Security Council and the General Assembly. And they said, okay, well, then I listened to I C J judgment, what is the security, Permanent Security Council and the General Assembly do next? You know what they did next? Now it went on to the I C C, International Criminal Court. And in the I C C, the International Criminal Court can now. Summon. The head of state of the belligerent state to come to court under what's called war crimes. And right now, the due process of law is taking place. Under war crimes. But they're all making it very public, you go watch. Live with the I C J, the I C C, all the investigations going on, you go back and watch it like it's C-SPAN, but you go watch it from an international law perspective. What's happening? Yeah, Russia right now, yeah, they, they already whooping on another sovereign state, yeah, they're doing that. But guess what? It's like anything in life, there's a penalty to be paid. Right now, Russia, as a belligerent state, as a warring state, they've broken all the rules. That's gonna come back on them, but you gotta give it time, what am I saying? Moors gotta understand due process of law. It's our job to check our boxes and go through the due process of law and write the documents. Send your constable court judgments, your constable court orders, you check the box, do what you're supposed to do. Keep the United Nations involved with what you got going on, step by step. If the United States decides to be belligerent, belligerent like Russia, no worries, guess what? We take them to the. We take them to the ICJ. Once the ICJ gives a ruling for the Moors, because they are gonna rule in Moors state because we got the treaties, guess what happens next? The United States still being belligerent. They're gonna end up in ICC. Who's gonna end up in ICC? Their heads of state. They all gonna be considered criminals and removed from office. So I need Moors to understand this is a step by step by step process. There's no home run swing. This is base by base, and we're now coming back into what's called self-governance. We're coming back into statehood. This is a due process of law. But there are plenty of laws to protect Moors. And the first law you needed was what? Sovereignty and independence of your own paramount constitution. That was your obligation to start there. Let's get back to triple principle. Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace and prosperity in Morocco, and recognizing that detainment thereof can only be affected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty and independence of his majesty, the Sultan, and the integrity of his domains and economic liberty without any inequality have resolved upon the invitation of his Cherievian Majesty to call together a conference at Aldacere's for the purpose of arriving at an understanding upon the said reforms, as well as examining the means for obtaining the resources necessary for their application, and have appointed as their delegates plenipotentiary the following. Now, let's go over and look at what the ICJ said about the triple principle. So I can show the Moors, the ICJ knows all about the triple principle. And they told you about your Moors treaty in nineteen fifty-two. Let's take a look at it. Alright, so now we're going to take a look at what's called France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two, right? On page one eighty-three, one eighty-three, top left hand corner. We're going to take a look at what the ICJ's decision as it relates to what's called the triple principle, okay? So we're scrolling down. Scroll down. So this is France, United States, talking about economic liberty, right? They're talking about the third box, but we're gonna talk about this as if they're talking about all three boxes, okay? Cause you can't talk about economic liberty unless you got sovereignty and independence, meaning you have a state. So let's see what the ICJ thought about the triple principle of the Act of Aldacere's, alright? Okay, mother, if you can start reading from here, it is common.
It is common ground between the parties that the characteristic of the status of Morocco as resulting from the General Act of Aldacere's of April seventh nineteen oh six, six, is respect for the three principles stated in the preamble of the Act, namely, the sovereignty and independence of his majesty, the Sultan, the integrity of his domains and economic liberty without any inequality. The last mentioned principle of economic liberty without any inequality must, in its application to Morocco, be considered against the background of the treaty provisions relating to trade and equality of treatment in economic matters existing at that time. By the Treaty of Commerce with Great Britain of December ninth eighteen fifty-six, as well as by treaties with Spain of November twentieth eighteen sixty-one, and with Germany of June first eighteen ninety, the Sultan of Morocco guaranteed certain rights in matters of trade, including imports into Morocco. These states, together with a number of other states, including the United States, were guaranteed equality of treatment by virtue of most favored nation clauses in their treaties with Morocco. On the eve of the Aldacere's Conference, the three principles mentioned above, including the principle of economic liberty without any inequality, were expressly accepted by France and Germany in an exchange of letters of July eighth nineteen oh five concerning their attitude with regard to Morocco. This principle, in its application to Morocco, was thus already well-established when it was reaffirmed by that conference and inserted in the principle of the Act of nineteen oh six. Preamble of the Act of nineteen oh six. Considered in the light of these circumstances, it seems clear that the principle was intended to be of a binding character and not merely an empty phrase.
Stop. Alright, so this sentence is right here. So what did the ICJ say about the triple principle? ICJ said that what? The preamble of the Act of nineteen oh six. Considered in the light of these circumstances, it seems clear that the principle was intended to be of a binding character and not merely an empty phrase. You understand how important that is? The World Court said the triple principle is the foundation of not only states in Morocco, but of planet Earth. The United Nations Charter is based upon the triple principle for all states around planet Earth. But more specifically, in this case, France versus United States of America, they're reading the preamble of the Act. And all those judges said what? The preamble is substantive in law, meaning it has teeth. It mean that it has a lot of credibility as it was called customary law. That the preamble based upon the triple principle must be what? Must be in conformity. It must be now abided by. Okay, so let's read that again. This principle, this application to Morocco was thus already well-established, was referred by the conference and inserted in the preamble of the Act of nineteen oh six. Considered in the light of these circumstances, it seems clear that the principle was intended to be a binding character and not merely an empty phrase. Now what you're gonna learn is when you read the charter and a lot of declarations, they're gonna keep using this word principle. So every time you see the word principle in international law, they're talking about the triple principle. Cause the United Nations Charter is what? Part and parcel to Moors treaties. So every time you see the word principle, always understand they're talking about the triple principle, okay? Let's continue right here, mother. This.
This was confirmed by Article one oh five, where the principle was expressly applied in relation to the public services in Morocco.
Alright, so when we take a look at the Act of Aldacere's, when we get down to Article one oh five, and we'll remember this point. Article one oh five tells a lot more about enforcing your triple principle, at least one of the principles, which is economic liberty without any inequality. But there cannot, there cannot be any economic liberty without what? Integrity of domain. There can not be any integrity of domain without sovereignty and independence. So you must understand, as soon as they're talking about the third box, automatically that's a conglomerate of all three, okay? Cause you can't have one without the other. Alright. So I just wanted to show you really quickly, Moors, that even ICJ talks about the preamble, alright? We must read the preamble. Okay. Alright, so from the preamble, it now lists all these, we'll take our time, we're gonna read these titles, right? Of these states and what they call their competent authority, their ministers plenipotentiary, right? These are the people who are authorized officials who have full powers to go and negotiate for their state. Okay, mother, let's read.
His majesty, the Emperor of Germany, King of Prussia, in the name of the German Empire, Mr. Joseph, Joseph Doradovitz, his ambassador extraordinary and plenipotentiary to his Catholic majesty, and Christian Count of Tassenbach, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to his very faithful majesty. His majesty, the Emperor of Austria, King of Bohemia, et cetera, and Abasala, King of Hungary, Rudolf, Count of Welsir Schein. His ambassador extraordinary and plenipotentiary to his Catholic majesty, and Leopold, Count Olesta Kozier Brozki, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to Morocco. His majesty, the King of the Belgians, Maurice Baron Justins, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to his Catholic majesty, and Conrad, Count of Boisseret, Steenbeke der Blarenheim, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to Morocco. His majesty, the King of Spain, Don Juan Manuel Sanchez y Gutierrez de Castro, Duke of Almodovar del Rio, his minister of state, and Don Juan Perez Caballero y Ferre, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to his majesty, the King of the Belgians, the President of the United States of America, Mr. Henry White, ambassador extraordinary and plenipotentiary of the United States of America, to his majesty, the King of Italy, and Mr. Samuel R. Gomere, envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary of the United States of America to Morocco. The President of the French Republic, Mr. Raoul Revoi, ambassador extraordinary and plenipotentiary to the French Republic, to the Swiss Confederation, and Mr. Eugene Regnol, minister plenipotentiary. His majesty, the King of the United Kingdom of Great Britain and Ireland and of the British Dominions beyond the seas, Emperor of India, Sir Arthur Nicholson, his ambassador plenipotentiary extraordinary and plenipotentiary to his majesty, the Emperor of all the Russias. His majesty, the King of Italy, Emile Marquis Visconti Vinosta, King of the Order of the Very Holy Annunciation, and Mr. Giulio Mamusi, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to Morocco. His majesty, the Sultan of Morocco, El Hajj Mohammed bin El Arbi Etorez, his delegate as Tangier, an ambassador extraordinary. El Hajj Mohammed bin Abdessalem El Mokri, his minister of expenses. El Hajj Mohammed Estefar and Sid Abdurhaman Beni, his majesty, the Queen of, Her Majesty, the Queen of the Netherlands. Jean-Kier Hannabotesta, her envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to his Catholic majesty. His majesty, the King of Portugal and of the Algars, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Anthony, Count of Tobar, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to his Catholic ministry, and Francis Robert, Count of Martinsferao, peer of the kingdom, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to Morocco. His majesty, the Emperor of all the Russias, Arthur Cassini, his ambassador extraordinary and plenipotentiary to his Catholic majesty, and Mr. Basile de Baccarat, his minister of Morocco. His majesty, the King of Sweden, Mr. Robert Sager, his envoy extraordinary and minister plenipotentiary to his Catholic majesty and his very faithful majesty.
Alright, thank you very much, mother. That's a lot of people, right? That's a lot of reading. Why do we do that? The parties must be known. We need to understand all of these European states know exactly who Moors are. As we read these one hundred and twenty-three articles, always reflect back to say, these people all over Europe know exactly who Moors are. Especially who? Let's go back up. Who was, who was one of the parties? Oh, okay. Well. The United States of America. Not the United States. Who's the party? The United States of America. Not the United States. This is what Moors gotta understand. We're talking about two separate entities. The United States of America signs things on an international level. Then they bring it back domestically and they pass ratification through the United States International Organization. Two separate entities. Alright? Okay. Now the next part of the preamble. Short couple of sentences. Mother.
Who furnished with full powers, which were found in good and due form, have in conformity with the program upon which his Cherievian Majesty and the powers have agreed, successively discussed and adopted.
Alright. So now we're gonna start reading the articles, but before we do that, so the preamble has two parts, right? We read about the triple principle. Here's the second part of the preamble. The second part says what? Who furnished with full powers, which were found in good and due form, have in conformity with the program made upon which his Cherievian Majesty and the powers have agreed, successively discussed and adopted. So the Act of Aldacere's has been solidified. But what's a very important word here, Moors need to understand, based upon a phrase? This word right here. All those people we just listed have what? Full powers. Do Moors have full powers? Well, let's answer that question with a reference point. Okay, watch this. Alright, let's pick the reference point. This is the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine. Articles one and two, and more specifically Article two, section C. Alright, so let's talk about, do the Moors have full powers? Okay, let's ask the question. This is the reference points. This is the Vienna Convention on the Laws of Treaties nineteen sixty-nine. Article one, scope of the present convention. The present convention applies to treaties between who? States! States, Moors. States. Do Moors have states? Yes and no. Some of the Moors have done what? Moors are ratifying, depositing, promulgating more states right now. Right? Article two, use of terms. For the purpose of the present convention, now you go down to what? Section C. This is the reference point. This is how Moors have to study. This is unpacked study session. What are we studying? International law. What are we studying? Contract law. What does a contract say about who has full powers? See, full powers means a document emanating from the competent authority of a state, designating a person or persons to represent the state for negotiating, adopting, authenticating the text of the treaty. So the treaty is all about whoever's representing the state for expressing the consent of the state. And the state is what? Bound by a treaty or for accomplishing any other act with respect to a treaty. So only the state can be bound to the treaty, cause the state is the sovereign, not the individual Moor. The state is sovereign and the state has full powers. And then the state, by those officers of that state, does what? It gives the emanating what? Document, right? Emanating documents what? Your credentials along with the constitution. Constitution gave you extended credentials to say you're what? An officer of the state, which gives you full powers of being what? Plenipotentiary of your state. Right? Tons of, tons of state, right? Alright, so here we go. Let's read it again. Full powers means a document emanating from the competent authority of a state, designating a person or person to represent the state for negotiating, adopting, or authenticating the state, the text of a treaty, for expressing the consent of the state to be bound by a treaty, or for accomplishing any other act with respect to a treaty. Okay, let's go back over to the treaty. Your Moors treaty, these instructions of your Moors treaty. And if you're not following instructions, then what does that make you? An outlaw. Cause you're doing what? Working outside of the law of your own Moors treaty. Let's see what your Moors treaty say, because treaty's supreme law in a way. It said what? You have to be what? Furnished with full powers. Moors? Not your written affidavits? Start with your full powers. Do you have full powers? More than likely, the answer is no. We gotta get back to what? The triple principle. What do we need? Sovereignty and independence, what statehood? And then the integrity of domains creates now what's called full powers, cause now you get credentials from your state that you're an officer negotiating on behalf of your nationals of your state. So let's start from the top. Who furnished with full powers, which were found in good and due form, having conformity? Moors have to conform to their own Moors. having conformity, Moors have to conform to their own Moors Treaty with the program. You got to be with the program, Moors. Upon which the Sharifian Majesty and the powers have agreed. What did they agree to? Everybody got to have full powers, and they have to be bound to the treaty through their state. So successfully discussed and adopted. So what has been successfully discussed and adopted, the treaty? But who can now express a treaty? Who can now go out and use a treaty to their defense? Only the state, and only the officers of that state can represent you in dealing with an international dispute. Not the individual Moore? Moors can't write written affidavits all by themselves? The ICJ told you on page two oh two, the only way to deal with the United States through what? Counselor court. And you can't say you're the counsel court, and the counsel general, and the counsel, and you're the legislator that wrote the law that you're abiding by, and you enforcing a treaty, treaty through your written affidavits, and the whole time you were stateless as Kendrick Bay. We got to start telling the truth. Your treaties give you the instructions. We need full powers. Let's continue. Alright, so now we're going to go over an overview, right? The overview is now going to tell you about the first six chapters. Remember that's seven chapters in the Act of Al-Dosers. It's going to outline the first six, because in reality, they already told you about the first status of tri- of your triple principle with sovereignty and independence. What's sovereignty and independence? Full powers of the state, okay? So now we're going to read now the six, what they call the contents, right? The contents, they'll go to the contents of what you're about to read, okay? Okay, mother. Article one.
Article one, a declaration relative to the organization of the police. Article two, a regulation concerning the detection and repression of the contraband of arms. Article three, an act of concession for a Moroccan state bank. Four, a declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenues. Five, a regulation concerning the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling. Six, a declaration relative to the public services and public works. And having decided that these different documents might usefully be coordinated in a single instrument, they have united them in a general act composed of the following articles.
Okay, so notice, they stopped at number six in the contents page, but it's seven articles. Why are they only going over six? You got to understand, everything we read in the preamble, all those names we went over, who was those people? They represented the state. They already identified who the representative was of the state. Everybody had full powers. They already went over the first box, which is sovereignty and independence. They checked that box already. That's why we took so long to read over that, okay? So then they went right into to what? What was Article one? Okay, let's go to Article one. So Article one was about what? A declaration relative to the organization of the police. So the first box in the triple principle is sovereignty and independence. We took our time to read all those names of states and the representatives, that was the state officials. So they go right into this Article one declaration relative to organization of police. Where are they going now? They're going to this second triple principle, right? Integrity of domains. What controls integrity of domains? Law enforcement. This is the Sultan. Now, the Sultan went straight into saying, yeah, let's talk about these police. I, I need some protection. The only way I can maintain my integrity, I need law enforcement. And apart that law enforcement, the police always set up next. Who comes out the police? Courts. Police and courts work side by side, right? That's the one-two punch. So the first thing the Sultan wanted to talk about was, writing in the order so he had proper security, police. That's the second principle. Integrity of domains, he knew he need law enforcement. Then he go into Article two, a regulation concerning the detection, repression of the contraband of arms. So we talked about police, now he talking about arms. He still talking about what? Integrity of domains for his law enforcement. Follow me so far? Then he go into Article three, this is the contents, right? An act of concession of a Moroccan state bank. Now what's he going into? Third box, triple principle, right? Economic liberty without any inequality. See what they're doing first? This is why we took the time to read the preamble and all those things. I'm setting you up, I'm showing you what they do first. The parties must be known, the party's about state. Did you prove that you have full powers under sovereignty and independence? And if you did, now let's talk about integrity of domain. And once we now show that you have the proper law enforcement setup to protect your state, now we can start talking about money. Money is always last. That's what Moors have to understand. First, we got to protect the land. Get the land together under sovereignty and independence. Then you go into integrity of domains. What did Moors do first? We jumped straight to box number two. We write in, we went right into integrity of domains, writing written affidavits. We violated our own treaty. We didn't have triple principle. We have what you call arbitrary and capricious, patently frivolous written affidavits, because we never had sovereignty and independence. We violated our own treaty. Then we can start about, talk about leaning people. You lean people based upon your integrity, but the lean produces what? Prosperity in economics. Okay, back to chapter three. An act of concessions of a Moroccan state bank. They're going right into economic liberty without any quality. Listen. Article four, a declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenue. Prosperity, right? Article five, a regulation concerning the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling. So that's your customs, right? So now you're talking about what? Still dealing with integrity of domains, economic liberty without any quality, because fraud takes away your money. Fraud takes away your money. Somebody don't pay you, that's a status of fraud. Smuggling, somebody smuggling something, they're trying to get away with what? Not paying the toll, the fee, the import or export fee. They're still talking about economic liberty. That's what smuggling means, smuggle someone not paying their taxes. Okay. And number six, a declaration relative to the public services and public works. What is that? What's public services and public works? That's the transportation department, right? That's all your electric companies. Anything that deals with public services and public works, right? So it's decoration relative to the public services and public works, and having decided that these different documents might be useful be coordinated in a single instrument. That they have united them in a general act composed of the following articles. So these are contents. Keep in mind, it's seven chapters, but they only listed six, because the first one they listed was sovereignty and independence, we went through the entire preamble. Alright, now listen, Moors, I'm going to wrap it up right here. We're going to talk about this in class fifty-four. The first thing I need to do is get, get you guys to understand the triple principle. Everything that ANPAC's been leading up to, to class fifty-three, it's about, been about the triple principle this entire time. And what's the triple principle about? It's really about enforcing contracts. The triple principle is about understanding what are your rights as Moors? As we get into the Act of Al-Dosers of nineteen oh six, we've been building up for fifty-three, fifty-three classes to get to this point. Okay, so what we're going to do, like I said, I'm going to leave it here. Class fifty-four, we'll keep reading. It's going to be a very interesting read. What you're going to find out, out of one hundred and twenty-three articles, they're going to mention the word Moorish forty-three times. Moorish forty-three times. So if they mention the word Moorish forty-three times, it means I should tell you what? This is about what? Moors. One hundred twenty-three articles. And if it's about Moors, that means about your Moors triple principle, and your Moors triple principle is all about your statehood, and your Moors triple, triple principle is all about the integrity of domains through what? Your laws. Then you get to the prosperity of utilizing your Cadi, C-A-D-I, alright? I end with that. Isma.